Mr. Garen, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, just checking.
Yeah, we're just waiting for our member.
Chief?
Yes?
You may want to just mute yourself until you're speaking.
Very good.
Council Elliot's coming on now. Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll do a roll call. Council Conway?
Here.
Council Drinkwater?
Here.
Council Elliot?
Here.
Mayor Legge?
Yeah.
Council Mercier?
Yeah.
Council Newm?
Yeah.
Council Rock?
Yep.
Council Samaras?
Yeah.
Council Chow?
Here.
That's nine present. Okay, uh, Major Business Communication Remote Zoom Participation. To the Governor Baker's Emergency Order, Modifying the State's Open Meeting Law Issued March 12, 2020. Meetings will be held using remote participation. Uh, all members of the public may view the meeting via LTC organs or, uh, live streaming or cable TV. So you just need a motion to accept. At least on file with Council Conway, secondly, Council Mercier. Uh, next is the discussion. So we're gonna have a discussion regarding the closures or the brownouts of fire stations throughout the city, which has been a concern of all councilors and specifically a few motions that have been brought up. Um, so what we want to do tonight is, uh, uh, not have anybody speak out of turn, but yet this will be informational. Um, people will be allowed to speak, um, with, as long as we staying within our parameters. You know, councils, uh, don't have any say on, uh, on, um, negotiations or anything that affects negotiation. Um, but we do want to hear from all members that are here, councilors, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Madam Manager and, um, the Sean Saroyes, the union representative, so, uh, president. So, um, I guess we'll start off the meeting. I don't know. Madam Manager, would you like to go first?
Uh, Mr. Ray, whatever is the wish of the council.
Sure, let me go, sorry, let me go to Council Mercier. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank you very much for calling this special meeting, uh, today, this evening. Um, it's very important that we discuss public safety and public safety should be at its best. And the things that I'm about to say, I don't know if this is gonna work. I don't know, but it's just suggestions. Maybe it's far-fetched, I don't know, but we have to put on our thinking caps and come to some sort of a understanding and agreement so that people's lives aren't lost. And I'm not saying that this happened, lives were lost because the stations weren't open, but I'm thinking, had they been, maybe we would have had a better outlook. I don't know. So let me first start by saying that I realize that due to the pandemic, firefighters classes are not resuming and academies are closed. I understand that, that makes sense, and I did not realize that. But I had an idea that might help the closure situation. Now, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm not saying you're gonna even do what I say, but I think that it's important that I get it off my chest and say it. We had questions about bringing back retired police officers when there is a need to maintain public safety. Well, couldn't we do the same for the fire department? Instead of stations closing, let's bring back retired firefighters who have passed a physical indicating that they are physically fit to return on an at-as-needed basis. That's just one idea. I don't know if it's possible, but if it's good enough for the police department, why isn't it good enough for you? I don't know. So let me just say that. Now, perhaps also, if we had a chart that showed data on which months and how many more, uh, are apt to be at risk for fires, what area, what section of the city? For example, if the data shows that during winter months between November and March, fires are more apt to happen due to space heaters, due to more indoor activity, then put forth a plan that, that those, um, stations never close within these months in those particular neighborhoods. That's the concern that I have. Now I'm thinking as well, what NEMLAC is to the police department, couldn't we possibly have a similar group for the fire department? I don't know, I don't know if any of these make sense to you, but it's a thought that I had and I just wanted to share that with you. Um, there, many, many years ago, I can say this because I was there a long time, maybe Eileen, uh, City Manager knows as well. We had an understanding that Old Ferry Road is a very difficult place to get into that section of Patagonville. So we would never close Old Ferry Road, and to me, that only makes sense. Not that I'm saying a lot of fires occurred there, but because of the wrought bridge being so antiquated that you, there's no room for that, for another fire truck to get over to go in that section, we leave that fire station alone in that section. I think the same thing should happen to Branch Street. It's a very, very dense neighborhood. Uh, the majority of fires tend to happen in areas such as the lower highlands. Uh, we see the devastation that takes place there because the buildings are so close together, because the buildings are so old, because poorer people live there. I know that because I lived there for thirty-two years and that's where people start out until they move to other sections of the city with no disrespect intended. But we gotta think in the real world and know what the possibilities are. So, these are a few of the things that I just wanted to share with you. Maybe it will help you. But we have money in the budget. We have nine budgeted positions, so I don't know. Just tell me that it's about money. I, I just don't understand that. No, I can't understand that. And if I'd be honest with you, to know that I thought nine people were down and two were about to retire, and I thought it would be eleven, which to me, that was a large number. But to hear that it was fourteen, that's mind-blowing. I, I can't, I can't get over it. So, be that as it may, I, I wish that we could start filling positions. Can we put out a call or whatever? Maybe they'll see, see what we can do to make this happen. Uh, that's all I wanted to share with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow, did you want to go next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I, I want to compliment Council Mercier's very, very thoughtful comments, um, especially about, uh, having the, I, I know that the companies closing are rotated throughout the city. Um, but when you have to call the mans and many of the people in the, uh, as the council said, in poor areas and usually more densely populated, um, and overcrowded as well, even within the living areas because overcrowded people. Um, it's just, just very dangerous, uh, overall. Um, I do have a, a couple of comments and, and questions, and I'm sure other councilors have very similar questions and comments and concerns. And maybe they will, uh, be covered by, by the, uh, Fire, Fire Chief soon, but I do want to say a thank you to the mayor also for calling a special meeting. It's, it's very, very important. And I want to, uh, give my prayers and condolences to all the victims of the fire on Westwood Street. And I thank the firefighters, the police department for working, uh, together, uh, to save as many lives as, as, uh, you guys did and the, uh, community partnerships like LRTA that provided busings, uh, the first responders that, that came, um, to help. Um, it could have been worse, um, even though, uh, uh, you know, we have a casualty, but it definitely, it, it could have been, uh, it could have been worse. Um, you know, the, the issue here, it's, it's closure, which is all about budget. It's all about staffing. And of course, um, as Council Mercier mentioned, it is a public safety. And when we talk about public safety, we're not just talking about, you know, the danger to, to the residents, to the public, but also to the professionals, to the working professionals, to the firefighters, to the first responders, to the police officer. For example, the fire on Westwood Street, because the nearby company was closed, the ladder company showed up first, and as soon as they showed up at the scene, they, they did their work. They're not thinking about, uh, what it's safe for them to go in or not. They're not waiting for other people, the proper, uh, company to show up or not. They just went in and do their work. Uh, very, very dangerous to have a ladder, but no water due to habitat with the fire, the heat. So when you have a situations like that, um, you know, it's, it's very, very dangerous for, for everybody. And if I could make a, um, uh, suggestions as well in addition to Council Mercier, um, you know, um, look, look at the areas that are very, very densely populated. Um, you have, uh, very poor living conditions. Um, these things, you know, whether the, uh, uh, fire company nearby, we don't know whether that could save a life or not, but certainly in the past two fires, we saw, we saw casualty, uh, we saw death. So, you know, if this is a, a, a budgetary issues, staffing issue, public safety issue, I think we need to resolve this as soon as possible and in your report, Chief. Um, I don't know if you'll, um, make a comment now or wait, uh, to say in your report. If you can also discuss what do you need, really, what do you need to minimize the number of brownout, um, to near zero, if not eliminate altogether? What do you need from, from the council? What do you need from city to get to zero brownout? Um, if, if that's even possible. Um, so, you know, this is why we're meeting tonight. It's real to discuss to prevent. We can't keep on having fires in our city and, uh, you know, people are dying. And I hear from other residents, I hear on social media, um, you know, people are afraid to come live in the city if they know that if there's a fire.
Just make sure we keep our comments general, Council. Just, I don't want to create any anxiety or anything by comments.
Sure, I, I'll just finish that if, if we could make sure that, you know, whatever you need, Chief, uh, if you could just make comments, see, uh, you know, to the level of zero brownout. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it was a good decision tonight to, uh, to get together and, and talk about it. You know, I'm sure everybody here has their suggestions of, you know, how to fix it or what's going wrong or what's going right. Um, but you're having the, the Fire Chief here and the Union President here as, uh, as well. Uh, I, I think, um, it's, it's a good start. Uh, obviously with, with, um, Major Donahue here, um, you know, being here also. Think to have, uh, the council and the three of them, uh, all together in the same, uh, meeting. Uh, hopefully it will be, uh, will be beneficial and, you know, I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert in, in any type of, you know, fire services or, you know, why this is done and why that is done. Uh, so, you know, looking forward to, um, you know, to how things are done, why things are done. And then I think the main point of the council on this is just to see what we can do, uh, as a elected body, uh, you know, to assist, uh, you know, the Fire Department, the manager, and obviously, and ultimately, uh, the public to make sure that, um, everybody feels as safe as they possibly can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to hear from the City Manager. I'd like to hear from the Chief of Police. Um, I'd also like to hear from the, from the President of the Union as to, I mean, these are the individuals that are gonna solve the problem and that's what I'd like to achieve tonight. I am glad we're having a special meeting. We need to respond to the public that, um, and reassure the public that, um, we're addressing this in spite of COVID, in spite of, um, you know, staffing. Funding is available. It's a matter of getting the staff and keeping, uh, these houses open. So, and not, no particular order. Um, I don't have any solutions, but it's the professionals that, uh, need to put together the plan to reassure. And, and I happen to agree with, um, with Council Mercier. There's, you know, seemingly there are some sections of the city that are at higher risk based upon, um, a, the age of, of the homes, um, age of the neighborhoods and the likeliness of either, uh, poor, uh, building codes, uh, poor upkeep of building codes or the age of the structures themselves, um, that we perhaps should focus on, focus on to ensure that those houses are open and that staff is made available. So, no particular order. I think it's important to answer a lot of questions that all of us have rather than asking all the questions. Get the information out there and then ask questions after. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna just allow everybody to go down the line to have a, a minute to say what they want to say, and then we're gonna hear from the manager, the chief and the, uh, Union President. So I'll let Council Conway go and then Council Drinkwater and so forth. Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank, uh, I want to thank you for, uh, uh, for putting this meeting together as, as, as already been said. It's extremely important that we, uh, we sit down and, and work things out, try to make things as safe as, safer than we, as we possibly can. And I look forward to, uh, listen to the experts, uh, the chief, uh, and his team. I think, uh, uh, you know, you, you people are the ones that, uh, uh, that know how to do this and make things, uh, safer for our neighborhoods. Uh, I think this is a, a period of time too that, you know, because of financial difficulties and the COVID, uh, you know, this is the time I think we need to be a little creative. Uh, and I think we need to, uh, as, as the term is, you know, uh, look at, look at out of the box uh, and to try to figure out some things that can make, uh, to make this, uh, a, a safer city. And I think that, you know, a lot of times people say, well, you know, this has never been done or that's never been done. I think we have to put everything on the table, uh, and examine it and try to do some things a little bit different, uh, that we can make sure that these, uh, these houses are open and make it safe for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, just briefly, I, I'm so glad, you know, we have the, the City Manager and the Fire Chief and, and the Union President on here tonight. And ultimately, um, we as a council ask them to put plans in place. But I do believe it's our job as a council to make sure, uh, that the department is adequately resourced. We approve a budget. It's one of the most important things we do every single year. And yes, the, the year-over-year budgets have, uh, continued to, to go up, um, in, in recent years. But I think we really have to consider if we're operating from a baseline that's been too low, uh, for a long time, over, over a period of a couple decades. Uh, because if what we're talking about is just continually, you know, increasing the budget, the rate we have and, and trying to get back to the, the recent historical lows of, uh, of, of brownouts and get back to the recent historical high of staffing, we're still talking about a couple of hundred brownouts every single year. So, um, I really think we need to look at it. We need to figure out if the baseline we've been operating off of is too low. And I think we have to be honest and say i- if the goal here of this council and the public is to reduce brownouts to a level of zero or as close to zero as we possibly can, do we need a significant increase in department budget? And if that is what we need, then I'm willing to go to the taxpayers and say, you know, we may need more money from the tax levy to make this significant, uh, investment in the department budget. And, you know, nobody wants to, to hear that taxes may have to, to go up more than planned, but, uh, that is the conversation I'm willing to go out and have with the public if it means that our community is gonna be safer. So, uh, I really look forward to hearing what everyone else asks us tonight, and, um, I'm sure there will be more discussion later. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Samaras and Council Newm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want to, uh, uh, state what's already, clearly what's been already stated. The issue here is that I think it's important to let our chief know and that the head of our u- uh, our union, that we're here to support them. They have to know that. We're, we're all concerned about our constituents. We, the one thing, we don't want anybody to die in a, in a fire. We also do not want any of our firemen, uh, hurt in a fire. And those are the things that I'm concerned. So I think it's important for us to let everybody, let, let the chief know, the head of the union know that we're here to listen and to ensure that if there's some type of equipment that's necessary, a type of training that they haven't had that's necessary, whatever they think they need to ensure that, uh, people, the citizens and law are safe, that they too are safe. You know, I mean, the, I'm not gonna offer any suggestions because, you know, what you know is what you see when you observe something. If you, if you've seen a fire or what you hear in the newspaper, how it was handled. They are the professionals. They know what has to be done. They also know how to do it. They also know what type of equipment they, they need. So I just want the, the chief and the head of the union to know and all firefighters in the city to know that we do support them. We don't want to have a day when something really serious happens and we lose the lives of firemen, we lose more people because of something that we could have had, some piece of equipment we could have had that would have made a difference. So I'm really here to listen, but I'm also advising, uh, I advise to the chief and to the head of the union is to talk to us about what it takes to ensure that we have the, not a good fire department, but the best fire department, best equipped fire department in the state. I mean, we deserve, we, the people law deserve that and the, the members of the fire department deserve to have the tools, uh, to work with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Newm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hosting this special meeting tonight. Um, you know, we all heard the last council meeting, uh, from managers and also from Chief Charant, um, as well, that, uh, you know, we as a council support a fire department and police department, in this case, fire department. We're budgeting for the fire department two hundred and thirteen. The reason, a- as was explained the last time from, uh, Chief, uh, Charant is that, um, the, the reason for the shortage of staffing, uh, one of the reason, main reason for the company closing, it has to do with, you know, the, uh, the academies aren't open, so they're not able to get those, uh, many people back in. And also, on top of that, you have people out sick or people out on quarantine. And those are some of the major, major reasons for the staff shortage. Uh, as far as the company closing, I think, you know, it, you know, from what I understand, it happened. Oh, it happened for many years, many, many, many years, and the decision of, of which, uh, a firehouse to be closed, uh, I think that lie on the chief and the, um, the Deputy Chief. And so, I, I, I guess it's what I'm saying is that, you know, well, we will, I will, I'm here, uh, like every councilor is, to support the chief and the fi- our firefighters. Um, uh, if you need more, if they need more staffing, then so be it. We help. We need to help them, that, you know, we need to support them with the tool and, and the support, uh, to make sure that if we, we, we as a council don't want, uh, uh, the, the company closing, then, um, you know, we have to really, um, uh, maybe have to the next budget that ha- have to increase the, whatever we, um, uh, yeah, giving, um, uh, this past budget. Um, so that all said, I think it's a great idea that the chief, uh, 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 President of the Fire Union and Madam Manager is here. I think those are the three, there were three individuals who know best, particularly the chief and the, uh, and the fire president, uh, the firefighter president to sit down and talk and how we can, um, you know, um, you know, what you need from us. Um, and, and that's, I'm he- I'm here to, uh, uh, support because the expertise is you both a- a- and the managers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so now we want to hear from the chief and, uh, Sean Saroyes and the City Manager. So, any particular order, uh, I'll let Madam Manager go first.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, and thank you and to you and the council. Um, I, I just wanted to say a few words, uh, at the outset, of course, and echo the sentiments of the council, you know, giving our most heartfelt condolences to all of the families that have been affected by most recent fires, especially the family who lost a loved one. Um, but I also want to give special recognition to the courageous efforts of firefighters and of the police, uh, who responded. Uh, this is, you know, whether it's the Westwood Street fire or the most recent fires this past week. Um, I think it underscores for all of us, uh, the difficulty and dangerousness of these jobs. And, uh, we've talked about it many times. And thanks sounds, uh, a little small, but I, I just want to let, uh, and I've spoken to the president to know how, how important it is and how meaningful it is what they do for us day in and day out, to the chief. Um, last week, as has been said here, we did provide a report in response to motions. Uh, and that was in, in, in the, uh, wake of the fire, um, back in November when a, a gentleman lost his life down on Market Street. Um, and, uh, we discussed a lot of things that have been mentioned here tonight. We, and, and I, I think it's, uh, I, I want to thank the, um, the mayor, uh, who asked for this meeting, and I think it's a good idea, uh, to have a more full conversation around this for a couple of reasons. For all of us to share ideas and support in that we've heard here tonight. Um, for the public to understand what we are talking about. I, I, I think anybody who, uh, thinks about, you know, public safety and wanting to be safe in your homes or in your places of work, uh, you know, fire is a very, very frightening thing. And so you want to be assured that the resources that the city's providing are, are sufficient to provide those, that basic safety for, for everybody. Um, and so, the chief is here. I, I just wanted to, you know, again, we'll come back and, and talk more, uh, specifically, you know, budget has been talked about. This isn't about budget cuts, um, in the fire department. Um, as we talked about last week, and Connor can speak more, uh, in depth about that. But, uh, we haven't cut any budgets. We've been working with coronavirus extra monies. Rightfully so for this very reason. When you have people out and you have extra expenses, um, we were able to utilize those to, to supplement the budget that we approved, um, for FY twenty-one. So, um, if, 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 uh, there's not, I, I just want to ask Chief Sharon to address some of the topics around this issue, maybe the history of brownouts that, uh, as the mayor had mentioned to me, you know, how brown, what is a brownout? How does it, it decided? Uh, what's going on here? What is, what policy, you know, does the chief, uh, have in place around brownouts and, uh, considerations? I also want to say many of the suggestions made here are- I also want to say many of the suggestions made here are very, I I think, very good ones that we should take back and explore. But um but I know the chief is prepared to speak to to a number of issues. So Mr. Mayor, if there's no objection, I'd ask Chief Sharon to address the council.
No, thank you, Chief.
Uh thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for giving me an opportunity to speak. Uh I first want to give my condolences and condolences of my department, the prayers and the thoughts of everyone are with the people who struggled through that tragic night. And I want to give special kudos to my department. The men and women who arrived first at that very dangerous fire and had to make critical decisions in a very rapid manner with very little information and in a very short time. We're not looking at something that's new here. We've had issues with brownouts for a great many years. They go all the way back to the early nineteen nineties, when three fire companies were cut completely from the roster and thirty-three personnel were laid off. Engine five from Fourth Street, Engine eight, excuse me, from Mammoth Road, and Engine nine from Rogers Street. Now, while many of those members returned back to the department, we've been dealing with brownouts since that time. Some years, a few, others, a great many. Recently, we've seen an upgrade in those. The last couple of years, we've been between the two hundred and sixty to three hundred and twenty some odd mark. With the advent of the pandemic, we've seen that increase. To date, we're at five hundred and thirty-nine. While we have had years in the past where we've been in the high six hundreds and high seven hundreds, we as uh low seven hundreds, excuse me, we are definitely on track to be somewhere in the seven hundreds as of right now. And that is even with one company out of service during the day and one company out of service at night. There are a lot of considerations that go into making the determination that a fire company is going to get shut down. For example, there is manpower. Is there enough personnel to man a truck? A fire truck does not leave a station in this city unless there are three personnel on it. There is an officer or a senior firefighter acting as an officer. There is a driver who is capable of operating the apparatus under all conditions and a back step person. This is the minimum standard to which we apply for the Lowell Fire Department. If we come up short and there is not enough money to hire, then we may end up shutting a company down. Firefighters have vacation. They have sick leave. And I don't think I need to remind the council that we were facing the worst pandemic that this country has seen since the First World War. In the weekends around Christmas and New Year's, I faced a sixteen percent shortfall in personnel. That's thirty-five members, either in isolation or in quarantine. Now, those times, of course, have gotten much better. I'm down to just one on quarantine right now. But the fact of the matter is, there was a manpower crisis for a short period of time. During this latest surge, there have not been opportunities to put personnel in the fire academy. While the fire academy is now open, it is conducting truncated classes. That is only half of the original size of thirty-six. We were unable to have physical doctor's appointments for our new employees. We were unable to schedule physical physical agility tests, all the necessary things to go through the hiring process of having new personnel. Regarding shutdowns, deputy chiefs who make these decisions both day and night do so with the knowledge of a directive from me. The determination is made based on the monies available as to what we can have open. And the deputy chiefs look at the manpower and make a decision. Those decisions are influenced by the amount of manpower coming in day and night, whether there are people sick, maintenance issues associated with fire apparatus, among many other things. The discussion was had earlier regarding Old Ferry Road. Old Ferry Road is a particular situation where we try to keep the fire company open. There's just as much of Engine ten's district heading outbound away from other fire apparatus as there is going in towards the city. And so that warrants keeping it open continuously. The other companies are rotated through. Some of them might see forty, others might see seventy closures in a year's timeframe. It is very much dependent on who is available for work, what the status of the trucks are, and that changes from day to day. In fact, it could very well change from the day shift to the night shift. There are basically three things that I have in my mind we need to number one, myself and my staff need to work with the money that we have available shift by shift to figure out whether a brownout should happen or not, whether we can afford to continue to keep the companies open. As many of you may or may not know, we did move in the middle of January, that is, starting one eleven, and then eventually on one twenty-one to shutting down only one company during the day and during the night. Once we reached a point where we didn't have as many members on quarantine or on isolation. That is just the first part. The second part needs to be making up for the losses that we have in manpower on the job. The department is to be staffed for two hundred and thirteen. I currently have a hundred and ninety-nine. That is a lot of people that are missing from the trucks. It makes it more likely that I will have to use overtime just to keep them open. With the manager's permission, we have started the process of hiring eight more personnel, but it is but a first step. We will have to hire more in the future in order to get ourselves back up to the two hundred and thirteen manning that is budgeted for. And lastly, we have to consider what is in the overtime budget on a yearly basis. The overtime budget is approximately seven hundred and forty-five to eight hundred thousand of usable monies on a yearly basis. That hasn't changed. It hasn't changed since two thousand fifteen. If one looks at the facts, we are constantly getting at least once every year an infusion of cash to keep up with the brownouts, to make them reasonable in number. But we may have to consider, at least temporarily, until new personnel can be put on the trucks, an infusion of cash to get us through to the end of the fiscal year. There are nineteen and a half weeks left in that fiscal year. I currently have less than four hundred thousand dollars to get through that length of time. We do have a municipal staffing grant, which we received for a hundred thousand dollars, which will help. But more help will be needed to keep the department fully manned. I want to thank the council for having an opportunity to speak, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions that the council has. Thank you.
Should we let uh why don't we let um the president, uh union president speak first, and then we'll get into questions? You want to add anything, Sean?
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Yeah, I I um first of all, I want to say, you know, thanks for having me tonight. Uh I want to say good evening to the councilors. Thank you for having me. Uh Mayla, thank you for inviting me here. Um Madam Manager, thank you as well. Um, my name's Sean Saroyes. I'm the president of Lowell Fire Fighters Local Eight Five Three. I come here tonight to speak on the longstanding practice of browning out companies. For those who may not be aware, this is a decades-old practice to randomly close one, two, sometimes three companies per shift prior to hiring any overtime for that shift. I have been employed by the Lowell Fire Department for nineteen years. In those nineteen years, I have seen many times where we've had multiple companies closed down, closed down. And during one occasion, I vividly recall, we had three companies closed. And unfortunately, a fatal fire occurred on that shift. That was the Bridge Street Fire in two thousand and ten. I remember being present as a member of this E-Board when President Dave Keen spoke in two thousand and ten in the city council chambers. I remember that the councilors at the time spoke to those closures as being unsafe and expressed a desire to change this closure practice. That was over a decade ago, and the closures still exist. This past November, I spoke with the city council when we unfortunately lost an elderly gentleman in a fire on Market Street at an elderly housing complex. Engine three, which is the first truck with water, was out of service that night. The council again voiced their concerns and the need to stop the closures at the city council meeting, but they continued. Then on February tenth, we had a fire on Westford Street. Engine two was the truck that was closed this particular night. This fire had people trapped in it and in need of rescue. With Engine two out of service, Ladder Two had to start that rescue operations without an engine company to assist with housing the fire to make it bearable in some of those windows that had fire coming out of it. Unfortunately, an elderly gentleman lost his life to that fire. Make no mistake, the members of the Lowell Fire Department are a proud organized group. These firefighters fought these fires valiantly, but unfortunately, the outcome remains the same. I'm sure that some of us will what-if ourselves after a bad call or a fire, but that's human nature. One thing members shouldn't ever have to question is, what if a truck was in service for a bad fire? Studies have shown that a fire doubles in size every thirty to sixty seconds. So getting all these companies on scene without delay is imperative to life safety. I implore this administration and the city to do the right thing and end this unsafe practice of brownouts. It's unsafe for my members that I represent, and it's unsafe for the residents of Lowell. That's all I have to say. I want to, I want to thank you guys for having me. I want to have a healthy discussion. I I do want to say that I spoke with manager Donahue uh three days ago. Um, two or three days ago, sorry, manager. The days just go by. Um spoke to her a couple of days ago. We do want to have a healthy talk. We want to sit down. Uh I I I look forward to it, sitting down with the chief and the manager and finally addressing this problem. As was stated before, and that's just last but not least, this is a thirty-year problem. Okay, I didn't create this. None of us in this room created this thirty years ago. Okay? But it's on our laps, and we need to address it. It's a problem, and I think it needs some attention. Um it looks like we're getting it tonight, and I appreciate whoever, you know, put this meeting tonight together. I appreciate everyone being here. I really do. And I look forward to the discussion um to somehow resolve this. I thank you.
Madam Manager, anything before we open her up to the council?
Uh, no, unless, I I I think open up to the council. I know Connor, you know, can speak to some of the financial issues, but that may be something that's um, you know, when when we meet, uh we've talked to, you know, the president and and the chief, you know, as far as working together on that. So uh but where is Connor? There is. If you want to just speak to some of the current, and and I acknowledge this um history of brownouts has been in place for a long time. Um and as the chief explained, um this year was a challenge for a number of reasons, but currently, I guess the question that the council may have, where where do we stand right now in terms of funding? And we've talked to the chief about uh providing resources, um whether they're in the budget budgeted account right now or, you know, from now till June thirtieth to minimize brownout, and we'll continue to work. But Connor, if you can address some of the financial issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager. Uh through you, Mr. Mayor, um and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity here. Uh as as the manager and the chief mentioned before, um the fire department overtime budget has hovered somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred thousand dollars uh on average for the the past several years. And um there is some flexibility within the appropriations for the fire department, and I I think as we move forward, um we've reached out to the fire chief and his staff in the fire department um to help uh maintain that flexibility to reduce the number of company closings financially. Uh and there's kind of two phases to this. The first being the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which will be between now and June thirtieth, as well as looking forward to the FY twenty twenty-two budget, which uh we've currently recently solicited departmental requests and will be discussing with the council uh very soon as to what the twenty twenty-two picture looks like, which recently received some information from the state, which is a major uh revenue source for the city. Uh but the council will have to take on balance the other fiscal challenges facing the city as it relates to this matter. And we we have fixed costs that increase every year. Uh we've talked about those many times, uh the charter school assessment, um our our health insurance and our pension assessment, just to name a few, uh and and how we relate all of that to the revenue picture, which um you know, some of our local receipts um are are not quite what they were because of um the pandemic. But what does that look like for the tax levy? And these are just questions and and food for thought for the council to consider. But right now, in the fire department more specifically, the overtime budget is at a place where there there should be um some funding available to reduce the number of closings. And as the mentioned, uh the manager mentioned before, we have had the opportunity to use CARES Act funding to help us through the pandemic, which has been tremendously important uh for the city in getting us through that period of time when there were a number of firefighters uh out on quarantine. Uh I'm happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Okay, so again, we'll open it up to questions to the council. Um at this point, we, you know, we know that the concerns are out there. Uh we know we're going to let the uh manager and and um the fire chief and the uh union president get together to discuss this, to come up with solutions. So um we'll keep our, you know, let's keep our focus. We're doing a good job. So I'll start with Councilor Rourke first, if you have any comments, and then go from there.
Yeah, no, I I uh thank um, you know, the fire chief, uh president of the local and a manager for speaking on it. Um, you know, Mr. Baldwin gave us the overview of the rest of the of the year. Um, you know, the four hundred thousand dollars that that remains for the last nineteen, twenty weeks of the fiscal year. Um, you know, it seems to be about half of of the of the budget is left with that along with CARES Act. Um, you know, hoping it doesn't present any problems going forward for the rest of this year. And I think that was mentioned by, you know, the manager and by uh by Mr. Saroyes. Probably next year going forward is where we're going to have to, you know, looking to um different resources to make sure, you know, not in a similar situation. Uh you know, with that being said, uh thank you all for being here tonight, and I hope it was uh productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Merson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh Mr. Mayor. Um sometimes things happen and they leave an indelible mark on your brain, and you just can't shake it. And the reason I say that is because I lived on Royal Street. I know that home on the corner of Westford Street that burnt. I knew people that had lived there many years ago, and it was rather crowded at that time. But I remember many years ago living there, and there was a fire that took place on Westford Street, across the street, but to the right a little bit. And if you went there today, you would see an empty lot near that gas station, a used car place that's there. There was a house there, and the house burned to the ground because when the fire department came to put the hoses to the um to the um fire hydrant, the fire hydrant was froze. Are we doing anything about, you know, thinking ahead and uh is this the job of the You know, thinking ahead and, uh, is this the job of the water department, uh? I mean, is, is this being done? I, 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 I worry about that. I, maybe it means nothing to you. But it means a lot to me because I lived through that. And, and I don't believe anybody died, but the house was lost and people were displaced. Do we have an answer to that? Is it the water department that flushes out the hydrants or checks to see if they're frozen?
Chief, if you can.
Absolutely. Um, yes, the water department is the one that goes through and checks all of the hydrants. Uh, when you end up with a frozen hydrant, what happens is the valve keeps the water. Uh, below the, uh, ice mark within the, um, soil, so. It keeps water down below. When a hydrant leaks at the valve down below the frost line. It has a tendency to charge the hydrant completely. And then, since it's up and above the frost line, it freezes solid. So when it comes to opening the hydrant, that doesn't happen. So that can happen from time to time. Um, it, it is a, uh, fixture of all of the big, the older mill cities, the Whistlers, the Boston's, Lowell Lawrence. Uh, with our old hydrant system. Um, the water department, uh, checks on those, especially in the warm months to ensure that they're functioning properly. And, um, we have a hydrant located every one to two hundred feet here within the city. Uh, definitely, uh, we are looking for multiple options as the companies are arriving. They have access to the data, uh, on their iPad showing. Um, where the closest hydrants are and what the options are available for them. Yes, a frozen hydrant does delay service. Um. But that's one of the. Associated problems that we have with winter fires.
So we have the water department check? When was the last time the water department checked the hydrants in the city, or, or are they not doing that? I don't know. Madam Manager?
We'll get, we'll get an answer on that, Counselor. I don't have.
Okay.
Right now, but I will certainly get an answer from the water department about that, but that. To make sure.
Yes, thank you. And lastly, I have this question. I don't know what it is about water. Do we in the fire department have what you call a fire truck, a water truck? A water truck?
Though I think you're thinking about a tanker, Counselor. Is that, is that?
Okay, well, this is a truck that holds water, right?
Yes, so our engine companies hold water. Um, usually between six hundred to about seven hundred and fifty gallons. And they operate off of that via the pump until they can get a hydrant line established.
Now, how many of those do we have in the city?
No, there are eight engine companies.
Okay, so there should be eight. And where are you getting this water from?
Uh, the water comes from the tank initially, and then the hydrant system is tied in with a large diameter hose, and that feeds the truck.
No, I'm saying, how do you get the water into the truck? Where are you getting this water from?
You get it from the hydrants.
Oh, yeah, so the hydrant is pushing the water into the. Into this vehicle, right?
There is a standard. Yes, there's a standard pressure that you get, and the vehicle boosts the pressure by using its pump to draw it out.
And have we lately ever had a water? Truck, uh, whatever you want to call it, go to a scene of a fire and it was empty?
No, that's, that's part of the normal checks that each fire truck, um, that all the crews make sure that their tanks are full. And their pumps are primed and ready to go.
Okay, that's not what I heard, but I'll take your word for it. Thank you.
Okay, Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Chief. I think that was a. Good overview of the, the challenges that you face. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Royce, for, for joining us and. imparting that information as well. Um. I think over the course of the decades, um. We do want to try to minimize these brownouts. I think it. I think it's, it's critical because we know time and time again. At some point in time. Something's gonna happen. Um. Which is one of the reasons why I thought, you know, moving to the twenty-four seven schedule, uh, twenty-four hour shifts rather, um, was important and was gonna have. Uh, an impact which I, which I think it did, so. You know, this exercise that we're gonna go through, uh, you know, putting more staff members on, increasing, uh, the numbers, uh, important. And, and we supported that. We got grants, and then now we're funding them ourselves because that's. Uh, a statement that we make for the people and to the fire, fire department. I always believe, and I believe that we're moving in this trend, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and I think that we've moved in preventing. Uh, the prevention of so many fires, however, as I mentioned earlier. The city is an old city. There's still a lot of old structures. And I can just reflect back to the Branch Street fire where. Luckily, that was not closed, and firefighters were a stone's throw away, where still seven people perished, but so many more were saved. Madam Manager, my long-winded point is this. Can you, we have an inspection, apartment inspection. Ordinance. I'd like to know what the status of that is, and while it. I don't know the, whether it's related to this or not, but. Given the fact that more often than not, it's had a smoke detectors faulty, electrical. Uh, failure of the, you know, landlord to keep building codes. Um. But this enough, uh, I, I think that's an important element that I would like to get information on. Um. Because it, it, it's. It's important that we, that we do, um, these things. Secondly, I just want to ask the chief or the union, uh, president, I'm not sure. Um. Have everyone been given access? Because we're talking about the impact that COVID has. Has everybody been? Um, you know, vaccinated and given the fact that, uh, I mean, I, I think that's an important element of this as we work through it, because so many folk were out. And, um, just wanted to make sure that everybody's been given access to, to. To those shots moving forward.
I don't know if you want me to comment, or if you want them to.
I don't really want, are you chief or the?
Okay, so yes, um, we have been given access to vaccinations. In fact, um, many of our members just got their second shots within the last two weeks.
Off set?
Um, so, um, so yeah, I just, that, that's one thing, um, just when it comes to the inspection aspect. Because I do know with the branch you try, there was some serious, uh, inspectional issues that, um, that have not been addressed, so. Um. So just, you know, in terms of supporting the fire department, we have, uh. We make that commitment, we continue, whether it's, you know, the fire apparatuses themselves. Um, I know a couple of years ago or last year and the following year, we went through a series of funding commitments for. Personal protection equipment. That was important in buying, uh, equipment to, um. You know, to wash them, to prevent health conditions from affecting firefighters, so I just. Want the union to know that we, we support you, we understand the concerns, we're trying to. Balance everything in the city. We know that brownouts are not a good thing. We're gonna address it. And, um. But yeah, those, um. Those are just my issues, and, uh, Madam Manager, I don't know if you want to.
You just, um, Mr. Ma, through, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, I, we'll get a report, um, from inspectional services on these, these properties. I know there's also been an investigation. Um, I don't know if that has been concluded as far as the causation of the fire, but. When that's available, we will look at that, but in the meantime, we'll find out, you know, what we know about these addresses and, and their condition. I mean, there were. Forty-four people displaced, um, from these properties, and that's a lot of people in, in those buildings. We want to make sure. That they're safe. Um, and to, uh, your other point, Counselor, in terms of, um. Apparatus and equipment, um, I, I believe we have a new truck coming in, uh, that the council supported. Uh, for, um, the Pine, is it Pine Street Chief that, there's a new pumper truck? It's been built? It's not. But.
Coming very soon.
Okay, uh, and, you know, so. And, and, and we've accessed CDBG grants, and we're, we're looking for every avenue to, whether it's safer grants, which I know the chief is. Applying for in March for more. Personnel as well as the staffing grant from the state, as well as. Uh, trying to be creative on CDBG grant to get, uh, a, a, a fire truck, uh, things that, uh, would. Help us provide the equipment necessary, and I'm. I'm happy to say I think the move happened. That we have finally been able to move fire protection out of Mammoth Road. Uh, that building was in very, very bad shape, and they moved to Pine Street. Where the health department had been located, so. I just wanted to let the council know. That's where they will, that, that will be their new home.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Manager. You did touch on a point which kind of plays into, and I'll, and I'll wrap up, Mr. Mayor, um. You know, forty-four people, um, in these structures, that. That, um, that doesn't tell me that there's compliance with, um. You know, with, with doing, so I, I would. I would like to know, um, what, if, you know, capacity issues and how many people, you know, what, what's the limit, what's, what's? Should have been the limit. Um, because I'm sure this is not the only location in the city, and, um. You know, that, that's a huge factor, it's a huge factor in, in, in other fires too, so. Um. I think that's, I, I, the last thing, just through you, Madam Manager, to Connor Baldwin, I think it'd be important to get a report. You know, to prevent the closures, uh, how, or, or minimize them, because quite frankly, when I hear the union president talk about two and three closures. Um. You know, back, back to the times where we were looking at, uh, adjusting overtime, making some changes, how, how can we? Um, address this? Um, it was. One was, was the maximum, um, and we were gonna work towards closing that gap, so. You know, what is, what is the cost associated with keeping all these? Open, um, as, uh, as we move into the next fiscal year this coming July. I think that's gonna be important to have that as part of the discussion. Thank you.
Get a report on that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Con, Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'll be very, very brief, uh. Uh, I think it's, it's obvious, uh, from this meeting and listening to everyone that. We're all here to, to make the city a, a safer place to live, and, and I want to. Give a special thanks to, uh, to the chief and to Sean. Uh, for your reports and the information. Um. You know, it's, it, again, as I said before, you guys are the experts. Uh, and we're here to support you. Uh, and I know that we work as a team. Uh, public safety, uh, city manager, city council. And, and, and so many other entities to make the city a safer place, so. I think that it's incumbent on us. That, um. That we work. As, as partners to make sure, uh, that, you know, the closure of firehouses. Uh, is a, is a thing of the past. We have to make sure that they're open. I think it's pretty obvious, and what's been brought up, and I think it was Sean that said it. Uh, that, uh, you know, we're going back. Uh, you know, how many years, and, and there's always this, we're gonna take care of things, we're gonna take care of things, and then all of a sudden. Uh, you know, it's, uh, um. Something happens, whatever that may be, and it's not taken care of, so I think that this is a great start. And, uh, I think we need to continue with this. And I know that the city council, certainly the city manager, is here to support, uh, the, um, fire. Uh, department and public safety, um, in any way possible, so whatever we can do for you. I, I think we're, we'll definitely be here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I know earlier in this meeting, I, I brought up the issue, uh, of, of the budget. I want to, um. Acknowledge again that, you know, I realize this isn't a problem of budget cuts, um, at, at least in recent years, and. You know, ear, early on in this year, um, at the start of the pandemic, uh, I'm sure, you know, all of us. Uh, were considering the possibility that we'd be facing, uh, the need to make cuts, and, and when we passed an FY twenty-one budget. Uh, I know I, as well as others. Uh, praised the, the city manager for being able to deliver a budget, uh, that avoided cuts. Uh, avoided layoffs, which would have been absolutely devastating, uh, to the staffing issue. Um, you know, so the, the department budgets have managed to increase over, over the years. Uh, but I really, I, I think it's no coincidence. The fact that we're talking about the problem that goes back about thirty years, um, into the, the early nineteen nineties, when. Department budget has begun to, to get, uh, cut and staffing has begun to go down. Um, you know, we had, uh, Proposition Two and a Half back in nineteen eighty that affected, uh, what municipalities were able to bring in. We had, uh, a state. Income, uh, tax cut, uh, that went into effect back in two thousand that brought the state income tax rate from five point nine five. Uh, down to five percent, um, over the course of, of twenty years. That's impacted. What the state is able to deliver and, and local aid to municipalities, and, and we're a community that's heavily dependent on it, so. It's one of these things that over time, that, you know, cities get, you know, squeezed a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more until. You know, we're, we're in a tight fiscal position, um, every single year, and, and I think that's, um, that's just what's happened over the, over the last thirty years, and, and that's why I, I bring up. The fact that I think we really need to take a step back. And not just look at, you know, where we've been over the past, you know, five or six or, or seven years. And really look at what is it going to take to deliver the right amount of staffing. Uh, whether we're looking at staffing, whether we're looking at the overtime budget, and maybe that's where we need to make the investments, but. Let's take, take a big step back and, and look at what it takes to deliver. A department that's of, of the size we need, and, and that has an overtime budget of the size we need. And then work towards achieving that, and I know it's not gonna be solved, uh, over one year. It's not gonna be solved in the next budget. Uh, but I really think i, as a council, we really do want to solve this problem. Uh, it may take, um, investments maybe over, uh, above and beyond what's been planned, uh, over the, over the course of several budgets. And, you know, we're coming up in, into budget season now, and I just, you know, um, you know, wanna, uh, encourage, uh, you know. Uh, Madam Manager and, and CFO Connor Baldwin and the chief to really, you know, let us know. What, what, what's really needed. If it takes us being bold, uh, and, and it takes us, you know, going to the, the taxpayers and, and saying, you know, we, we know this might be tough, but we're asking for a little bit more for this reason. Um, then, you know, from what I've heard from this council tonight, you know, I think there's a will to do that. I know there's a will on my end. Um, so I don't want to have to have this meeting, you know, again in the future, um, a, and, you know, have to look back at that time, you know, we met in twenty twenty-one and said we were gonna do something, so. Uh, I think this meeting is a great, great step forward, uh, you know, appreciate all the, the leadership being here and being on board, and appreciate. Uh, you, Mr. Mayor, for, for calling this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon, any further comments?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want to reiterate what's already been said, but thanks. I want to thank you for calling the meeting, but I want to thank Sean, this, you know, from the union. And the, and the, and the, and the chief and the city manager. I, I think tonight's discussion was a really. This is a good start, in, in a sense of, we've always been working on this problem. But the problem has become. We'll say, uh, because of different situations, it, it's worsened. And it's a problem that's been with us over thirty years, as was stated. And it really is a problem that has to be solved. I think there's a willingness with the city council. I think the administration, uh. That has spoken tonight. You know, has the ability and the understanding of what the, what the issues are. I think they just need to know that we're here to support whatever direction that they guide us in. And I think it's important that. We've had this discussion. It's for the right reasons. And I think, I, I think. Uh, this is solvable. You know, quite often we have meetings, and sometimes. You know, matters just get worse, or they, or they, or they worsen. Or it's difficult to understand. You know. What type of support is truly out there? But I think everybody's listening very carefully. To, um, good information that we've received tonight. And I think it, it, again, it shows that this problem is solvable. But it's been with us a long time. And actually, as Councilor Drinkwater has stated very clearly. There's been a money issue over the years, and there comes a time when. We might have to make some very tough decisions. But for the right reason. And I think this is one of the, there's no question, this is one of them. The safety of our constituents and the safety of the men and women, uh, who work for the fire department. What, the one thing that I do not want to be part of. Something where we say we could have, we should have. Or whatever. That, that doesn't solve problems. But tonight, I'm, I'm listening to a problem solving situation. I think we have the staff and the willingness to do this. So I want to thank everybody for their participation in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor J.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I also, uh, thank the chief, uh, Sean, president of the firefighters union. Madam Manager and, and CFO for the comments, for the reports, very insightful. And I share many of the, uh, comments by the counselors, the frustrations. Uh, the hopes that we can solve this. uh, the hopes that we can solve this, um, as soo- as soon as possible. And of course, you know, there's, there's no easy solutions to this and we all alluded in different comments and questions and, uh, to the chief. Um, but I think so that way we have an idea a little bit. Um, in an ideal world, uh, if you could do that, if an ideal situation, um, maybe the chief or Sean can comment on this. What would it take to minimize the brownouts to the level of zero? Like in terms of the number of staffings, I know from last week's report, um, going back to the 1980s, where you had a budget for 256 staff and now we're down to 213. So I'm wondering if the brownout situation was different back in the 80s or now, uh, once we increased the staff. Um, you know, would that be possible just, just ideally to minimize the, the brownouts? And either the chief or Sean can answer this question, that question. Thank you.
Whoever wants to tackle it.
Be me. Um, so, um, the big difference in the manning that you saw in the 1980s was that we were, uh, we had 11 engine companies, a whole lot of companies. We were manning, uh, a much larger department at the time. Uh, 213 is more charisurate with the amount of companies that we have now. Um, to completely, we needed a comprehensive plan. It has to include a full manning and it should include the amount of money necessary to, um, pay for the overtime costs that are associated with keeping that manning. But right now we're behind on a, a lot of personnel. Our overtime costs getting, are getting prohibitive because we don't have enough personnel on the trucks to begin with. Um, we need to address those things together. We can't just take a big chunk of money. I, it would be very difficult for me to tell you right now, Counselor, that give me this amount of money and we'll keep the companies, um, completely open. That's, um, certainly something we would look at, certainly something I would talk with, with the, uh, city manager about, Connor, um, and, um, Mr. Saroyes from the union, definitely. Um, but that's something that we would have to look at, uh, in the long term to know what, uh, the financial burden of that would be.
Thank, 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 uh, thank you, Chief. I don't know if Sean wants to make a comment or are you okay by that?
Yeah, I just, uh, real quick on, I mean, the chief hit the nail on the head. Uh, I, I don't think that 213 as well, as much as we, I think we need to get to 213. We're at 199 right now. Uh, if we're fully funded for 213, we probably should be a little closer to that than we are right now. We have two long-term guys that are gonna be going, um, on retirements. They're on injury right now. They're gonna be going on retirement. They're gonna be gone by probably the spring. We have another gentleman who's gonna be retiring because of age. We have, we, we could technically be down, I'd venture to say 17 to 19 people in the next few months. It's gonna be very difficult to make up those day, those positions. Um, I spoke with several members of my department that work at the academy. And I know the chief had spoken to the academy also. Um, getting people in there is tough right now, but it's, it, they are running academy classes. It is very difficult, uh, but they are running classes. Um, if we can just start chipping away, getting a couple here, a couple there. You know, quite frankly, I wish we'd done it over the year, the last year. We'd have a lot more, uh, guys on the job right now, women, guys, I'm sorry, members on the job. Um, we'd have a lot more of them right now, but here we are at 14 and now trying to play catch-up. Uh, it's a little tough, but I guess the question is if 213, is 213 gonna, uh, prevent brownouts? I- i- it's a key, it's a part of that problem. It's not gonna fully, it's not gonna fully, uh, stop that problem. You know, and, uh, and quite frankly, our overtime budget would have to increase as well with it. Um, that, that's, but that's something that, like I said, it, we can all sit down together, me, the chief and the manager can sit down together and, and try to hash that out exactly what. But no, getting to 213, if we got there tomorrow is great and it should be that case, but it's not the full answer. It's not gonna fully, uh, give us that complete shutdown. So, if that makes any sense.
Uh, thank, thank you so much, uh, both for your response. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I, this being a special meeting, I don't know if there'll be like the announcement section at the end of the meeting. Um, I would like to make a coconut. I'm sorry?
The mention about the fund, the.
Okay, yes, uh, thank you. I just wanna quickly mention that the CD and Community Teamwork Incorporated, CTI, has set up a, a, uh, fund for the families and the victims of the Westwood fire. Um, I just wanna briefly, um, give the, the website to the public, um, to the audience who's watching, if they could, uh, pass it along. Um, funds, uh, be accepted, uh, by the CTI and they have set up, they have set up a, a, a website. I don't know. Um, there you go. It's on the screen now. Um, basically it's C O M M T E A M dot org. Comteam.org. That is the CTI, our website, and there's a donate button there. Um, they accept, uh, funds, uh, for, for the Western fire. Um, if you have clothing items, personal items, you can donate, uh, that to Katie's Closet or the Wish Project. Um, I know that CDI has received, uh, some donation already. Um, this is a much-needed, um, as some councils mentioned before, these families, um, they are there, they're already impoverished. Um, this, this crisis just add more difficulty to, to their families. And, uh, the families, the range from toddlers all the way to, to grandparents. Um, they need what you can give to get them back on their feet. And I wanna thank all the council, the city managers, office and CTI for putting this, um, uh, fun, uh, fire fund together. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, we'll wrap up. I wanna thank the counselors. Um, everybody had a lot of good questions. We had a good discussion tonight. Uh, thank everybody for their involvement. Madam Manager, uh, Chief and, uh, Union President. We have some work to do ahead. We'll let you guys, um, meet and discuss and we'll have another discussion and see where we go from here. Um, so I appreciate everybody getting together tonight. And again, you know, we have a little bit of work ahead of us, so, um, let's continue this and make sure we can come up with a solution. So we appreciate it. Um, need a motion to adjourn if there's no further questions by Counselor Rock and second by Counselor Murcia. Thank you, everyone.